Good afternoon, visitors. Good afternoon, all, to the June State Board Work Session. I'm John Whitzel. I'll be, if you will, subbing for our President, Pat Tim. She is ill, so let us get started. Denise, would you call the roll, please?
Patricia Tim. Rachel Wise?
Here.
Maureen Nichols?
Here.
Patrick McPherson?
Yes.
Molly O'Halloran?
Present.
John Whitzels?
Here.
Lisa Fricki?
Here.
Patsy Co. John?
Here.
And Commissioner Bloomstead?
Present.
Seven present, one absent.
Thank you, Denise. Information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of the room, on the south side of the door. Live web streaming will be available through the State Board of Education website. And I'd like to remind Board members to please engage your microphones before speaking and to turn them off when you are done speaking. Also, please turn off your personal cell phones. In regards to Board Member Reports, dates, and discussion items, we will discuss meeting participation in joint meetings with our policy partners. This is where we usually have individual reports of where we have been since our May Board Meeting. We will have a brief group discussion around events that are attended by several Board Members. I believe this will improve our efficiency and expedite our agenda, giving us ample time to discuss key agenda items. This month, I would like to discuss the following event as a whole group: the Standing Bear Breakfast Commemoration, please. Molly, Patsy, Patrick, and Lisa. You attended, would you make a few short comments on your takeaway?
I won't speak for any length of time. I found the breakfast interesting. I enjoyed the speaker. I think it gave me some perspectives on Standing Bear that I wasn't aware of and on some of the issues that still exist for Native Americans, so thank you.
Molly?
I wanted to report to the whole group, great news. Joe Strida won the humanitarian award from the Nebraska Bureau of Indian Affairs, and his journalism team from UNL won the National Recognition for the Kennedy Humanitarian Award 2017. So what I just was going to say, this really brought attention, not only that we have a trail commemorating Chief Standing Bear, but also that hopefully federally they're going to recognize it as a trail and highlight, really, the courage and honor of the Ponca people. And it was so neat to have other State Board Members there. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Patsy?
Also, the college students that were recognized, that was the first time that college students had ever been recognized for that. And I thought that was amazing that they were still students and they were being recognized. And then another part of that celebration that I think is so important is the music and the dance, all of the arts that were for us that day, bringing it all in and making the celebration even more poignant.
Lisa?
You know, I studied about Standing Bear in school, but I guess the piece that came to mind was the idea during the Ponca Trail of Tears from Oklahoma back to Nebraska, that his son had died and the son had asked to be taken back to Niobrara to be buried. And they got as far as Omaha, and they were stopped. And the owner or manager of the Omaha World Herald, and General Crook, I believe, paid for him to go to court. And the eloquence of what he said, that Indians are just as human as anybody else. It doesn't matter what you look like on the outside, it's everything what you are on the inside, just like our kids, you know? And so, and that made, you know, national history, that made them human beings, according to the United States. And so, I, being reminded of that was powerful for me.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you very much. Rachel Wise attended the Maintaining Momentum in Your State, Advanced Planning and Implementation of Every Student's Sees Act on May the 22nd through the 3rd in Houston, Texas. Rachel, would you like to give us a review?
Yeah, I will just give a brief update, and then I'm just going to pass out two documents. One is a summary of some of the sessions, just to give you that information. I don't know if I have enough each way. I don't do this as well as you do, Denise. There you go. Oops, I need to keep one of those. And then one is the handouts. And so, this was a convening of states that are looking at, you know, what's next? You've submitted your ESSA plan, and what's next? So the focus was on implementation. The states that were participating were Colorado, Delaware, Idaho, Indiana, Massachusetts, North Carolina, Texas, and Washington. They had teams there. I was asked at the last minute through NASB to attend on behalf of Nebraska, and so it was a great chance to kind of see what these other states were doing as part of their work and their teams that were there. Some of the sessions really provided some insight on our next steps around ESSA, some things about the deadline, and if we don't have a thorough application, what the consequences will be. And a lot of discussion on those states that were early submitters of their plans. They maybe had greater opportunities in revision and some work than those states like us who will be submitting in September. Some great discussion that I thought fit well with things that we're doing, and I just would like to commend the Commissioner and the team here at the Department of Education and the direction the Board has been going, in particularly around accountability, some of the pieces that we have in place, and around context. There was a theme that context matters, and when you look at how we identified priority schools, and today we'll be talking about that again in August, it really is starting to understand that context, that our contexts are different for our school and school communities. And we have to embrace that, understand that, and think about that in relationship to accountability. Another key piece was creating an interface between various federal programs and ensuring that we have an interface, for example, with our ESSA plan and current technical education through Perkins, through WEOWA. And Molly, as you talk often about the importance of the workforce development, that we really embrace and intersect those pieces in our ESSA plan. So those are some of the key things that were there. And then, a lot of discussion on the additional indicator, and I've handed out the newest, and I think you may have received this through email also, policy update by NASB that gives examples of that fifth indicator. And it gives examples and thoughts around career and technical education, around school climate and student discipline, around social-emotional learning, chronic absenteeism, and access to high-level coursework. One of the things that was reported out is that chronic absenteeism is probably the number one additional indicator that most states are looking at as a part of their ESSA plans. So I just wanted to provide that information to you. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Rachel. Do any other Board Members have some contacts with stakeholder that they would like to present at this time? Go ahead, Mo.
Yes, just a couple of weeks ago, I had an invitation from Superintendent Craig Kautz from Hastings Public Schools to a celebration for Longfellow Elementary. They were one of seven schools in the United States that received the Professional Learning Community School. And so, all the students, the school is going to be renovated here in the next year, so they're going to be moving out, so they brought all the students over to Hastings College, which is just down the street into the chapel area there. And it was just so amazing and wonderful to see about 400, 350, 400 students and parents and teachers all in the room to celebrate this awesome celebration of an accomplishment that took teamwork. And what was especially fun for me also as well was seeing one of our, not our Teacher of the Year, but one of the top two that was from Hastings, she teaches at Longfellow, and so we got the chance to talk again to each other. And so, it was just a great day to be with elementary students, being a former elementary teacher, but seeing the hard work pay off.
Thank you, Mo. Anyone else? Yeah, Patsy?
Well, Lisa and I had an experience that we decided right away, about two minutes into it, that we were going to have to share with you. And I guess to abbreviate that, so that you get the whole central idea of it, it's that stakeholders can be found anywhere and that they are ready and willing if you give them the opportunity. So Lisa and I went to dinner in a book seller's store, and she went ahead of me afterwards to look at some books, and I followed shortly behind, which is the only way I can follow. And I heard some laughter and that sort of thing over in the corner, and so I got in there as quickly as possible to be part of the joy there. And it ended up, we met with four people that were having a discussion about current events and politics, and shortly into the conversation, we said, "Oh, well, we're, you know, State Board Members," and Lisa said, "We have this forum that we are trying to get opinions about throughout the state. Would you guys be interested in giving your opinions?" And they were like, "Yes, yes." They were really excited about it, and we weren't used to that. So what happened is, we ended up doing an ESSA stakeholders presentation in a bookstore with four people that we didn't know, and we took a picture, which I think we're going to show you. And there they are. And there's an architect, librarian, RN, they're just absolutely amazing people. And as we got ready to leave, they all said, "Every time we come to this meeting, we discuss important educational and political things, and we walk away and say, 'Well, there's just not much we can do about it, nobody, you know, nobody hears us.'" But today, you guys stopped and took the time to listen to what we had to say, and they all wanted you to know that they're ready, willing to serve, and if you want information from them, just contact them.
And so, what a joy. You know, God puts angels onto my path every day, and those four angels shared a lot of great information. I would like to give you their names. There was a nurse, an engineer, a teacher, librarian, I mean, they were really interested in education. It was Mary Barton, Gerald Barner is the engineer professor at UNL, Alice Tim from Lincoln, and Donna Durett from Eagle. And they invited us back to join them. But I have their input, whoever needs the input for stakeholders. I have what they thought quality teacher effectiveness should look like. She has the priorities of the top three things they think are the most important, and of course, they're all student-directed. And so, just a plug out there, we really do want to meet with small groups, accidentally or on purpose. So, thank you.
And they recommended a magazine for us to read, so that we can keep up on important social issues, and it's called The Soul Journal, and I ordered it right away.
Rachel?
Mine was on purpose, not by accident, in South Sioux City with some folks from South Sioux City, Winnebago, and Wakefield, and handed out the strategic plan and our AQuest guide, and did some general discussions around where we're heading with ESSA and with accountability, and got some great input from folks that represented a variety of different areas. But some common themes, the focus on literacy, early literacy intervention, the focus on teacher prep programs, and that theme was around making sure that teachers coming out today know how to really meet the needs of kids and students that they'll be serving. Absenteeism came up as an area for indicator to consider, and the issue of chronic absenteeism. A discussion around growth and how important it is that we highlight and recognize growth, and with some of our schools that are, you know, significantly low-income schools that are doing a good job with growth, that we highlight that and recognize that as part of the process. And personal learning plans was the other piece that came out. So really, some great input, and I'll write that up and send it in as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Anyone else? Yeah, Pat?
I was invited to a scholarship presentation by the Sarpy County Republican Women, and they asked me to come and talk about the State Board of Education, and I gave them a little information on what the responsibilities and duties of the Board are, talked a little bit about the approval of ACT tests and some legislation, and had the pleasure of watching a young lady receive a scholarship. So it was a pleasant opportunity to share some thoughts about what the Board does. Thank you.
Any other comments by the Board Members? I had the opportunity of briefing ESU II in regards to the STRAT Plan and AQuest. Numerous questions I got, they were not about the STRAT Plan or AQuest, but in regards to the educational bills at the Unicameral right now. They were very aware of the bills and had questions about them, so it was a very productive meeting. I got to participate in the Omaha Symphony Education Program, where they had various types of support for our various young people interested in furthering their music goals, and this is sponsored by the Omaha Symphony. And also, what's interesting, in their education program, at the very bottom of their program, it gives them the Nebraska State Standards for Music at the bottom, referencing. I thought that was good on them for doing that. Had the opportunity to attend the Architecture, Construction, and Engineering Award Scholarship Presentation at UNO, where several local area schools were participating with partnerships with the Greater Omaha Chamber of Commerce and other engineering firms. In fact, several of the students' projects were used to design changes to their own schools. Rich Cott is actively involved in this program, and they had five students earn $4,000 scholarships at the event, with about 200 family members and friends attending. This is Creighton University, Metropolitan Community College, and the city of La Vista had a combined GED graduation at Metropolitan Community College, where over 30 graduates, student graduates, and 200 family members and friends participated in their graduation. They were very, very proud to have earned their graduation certificate, their GED, the hard way. In fact, they had a 70-year-old man give the presentation who had earned his GED at 64-years-old, and that was quite a testimony, for sure. But also, we're seeing more coordination within our communities. I give an example, the city of Papillion, the city of La Vista, and the Papillion/La Vista school districts are, if you will, coordinating their efforts in regards to addressing the fatal issues of suicide, bullying, and behavioral issues. So, good for Papillion/La Vista, Papillion and La Vista. So, thank you very much. And also, Lisa and I will be hitting the road again next month in regards to more stakeholder feedback. We look forward to it. Thank you very much. Okay, if we could discuss requests for meeting attendance. Commissioner Bloomstead, would you?
Yeah, so the report is actually in there for your travel expense report, and I think tomorrow we'll finalize all that, so if you have other things to add to that for the future, do you have a list that you want to go through?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, also, if the Board would like to follow along the list we have in regards to, for the Nebraska Career Education Conference next week, Rachel Wise and I are scheduled to attend. The National Association of State School Boards of Education, New Board Member Institute, will have Lisa Fricki and Patsy Co. John attending next week also. School Mental Health Summit, two places. One will be in Scotts Bluff, Kearney, and La Vista. Molly O'Halloran is attending in Kearney, and Patrick McPherson and myself are attending at ESU III in La Vista. Administrators Day, July 26th, 28th, Yvonne's Conference Center in Kearney. John Whitzel's requested attendance for NDE Day only. Rachel Wise, Molly O'Halloran, Lisa Fricki, and Patsy Co. John's requested attendance on all days. Board Members, if you have any additional travel requests to be approved, please submit them to Donlin, Ryan, or Laura before tomorrow. Tomorrow, we will approve the Board request for meeting attendance. And we do have the monthly Board travel expenses. They are attached to the e-meetings for your review. Commissioner, do you want to talk about the consent agenda?
Yeah, so just kind of as our regular routine, if you had any items on the consent agenda that you would like to consider separately, go ahead and fill out that pink slip and be able to put it right over in that box by Scott Summers. I will move on to the report on rules. We have a few different rules to report on. Rule 19 and Rule 1 were both approved by the Governor already, so those are now, well, let's see, effective, I guess, essentially next week. And then, we have a rule, still our rule, our NDE personnel rules are pending approval yet in the Attorney General's office, and then pending approval yet in the Secretary of State's office and the Governor's office is Rule 24 and Rule 21. We don't have any current rules up for hearing, so that's my update on rules for you at the moment.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Next.
I think we're going to have Donlin come up and give her report, right?
For the record, I'm Donlin Rice, State Board Liaison. And we've had a flurry of activities the last couple of weeks. We did receive our NASB grant for early childhood education. That will be $7,000 for two years, and we're planning to work on providing some professional developments for principals to help them with their preschool programs and how to, what to look for for a quality preschool program. Also, I'm happy to say that on State Board Member recommendations, we did nominate our Commissioner for the NASB Policy Leader of the Year, and so that will be determined later in the fall. Also, we were able with, Ryan, I have to say, helped with this, with the letter of support for Rachel Wise to be nominated for the chair-elect for NASB. So lots of NASB activity going on. Just on the side, you're going to be in great hands with Ryan. He's already started transitioning, and he's going to do a fantastic job. One little reminder, I did hear from three Board Members on the NASB scorecard. If you still want to submit something, you can still get that in to me. And then, I'm just going to take a moment of personal privilege, and it's looking kind of suspicious in here with a few people that I recognize in here. But I just want to say that I've had a 20-plus-year career here, and I started in the Commissioner's office under a special project, and I'm ending in the Commissioner's office. Guess they want to keep an eye on me. But in between, I did a lot of different jobs, including leading a great team for 15-plus years with curriculum and instruction, and worked with some wonderful team leaders and just a lot of nice opportunities. I used to say I was going to die young with a good resume, but I'm just going to die now because I'm too old. But, no, not soon. But it's really been an honor and a privilege for me my last two years here to work with you as the State Board of Education. I have watched this Board take on many challenges over the years, but these last few years, you're kind of on warp speed. I mean, you've done so many good things and wonderful things that I think will lead the state for many, many years to come, and it's just been a privilege to be a part of all of that. You know, you've taken on a lot of challenges and things that aren't easy, but I think the thing that is so affirming is that I think that you are all in this for the right reason. You're in this for kids, and that comes through the betterment for teachers, parents, and most of all, students in Nebraska. That just comes through in everything that you do, from working on the Policy Committee to trying to have the best assessments possible, to the innovation of AQuest and the strategic plan. So it's just been a privilege for me to be involved. So that's all I have to say. Now I'm going to start crying.
Commissioner, if I could deviate from the agenda just for a moment. There is no doubt that Donlin Rice is the go-to person in NDE. If one needed anything in NDE, from solid advice to guidance, she definitely was the person you trusted and you went to. Our achievements and our successes are a result of Donlin's unsafe, unselfish, and tireless efforts. She has definitely brought great credit upon herself, the State Board of Education, and the Nebraska Department of Education. And I would like to read this resolution to the audience right now. Nebraska State Board of Education, Resolution: Recognition of the Retirement of Donlin Rice. Whereas Donlin Rice has served the students, educators, post-secondary institutions, families, and communities of Nebraska through her tireless work serving all curriculum areas, including those that prepare students for life beyond the walls of their educational institutions. Whereas Donlin Rice served on numerous boards, councils, and advisory groups, expanded connection and support for Nebraska education. Whereas Donlin Rice facilitated the first Nebraska Standards Writing for Goals 2000, which reflected both content and processes. Whereas Donlin Rice served as the team leader for the Curriculum and Instruction Team, built the culture of the Curriculum and Instruction Team to genuinely work across disciplines and seek opportunities for collaborative efforts for improved student achievement and engagement, provided leadership and support for the processes to develop and revise content area standards, allowed team members the direction and yet the freedom to do their jobs while providing support and opportunities for professional growth, providing leadership and support for Nebraska career education initiatives, including the transition to Nebraska Career Education, the Career Cluster Model, and partnerships with Department of Labor and Economic Development. Whereas Donlin Rice served as the agency's lead for educator effectiveness efforts and oversaw process to develop and implement the Nebraska Teacher and Principal Performance Framework in order to define effective practices, improve teaching, and learning. Whereas Donlin Rice served as the State Board of Education liaison and supported the development of the 2017 to 2026 strategic vision and direction. Therefore, it be resolved that the Nebraska State Board of Education recognizes Donlin Rice's contributions and service to Nebraska schools on behalf of a generation of Nebraska children, and that the Nebraska State Board of Education greatly appreciate the assistance Donlin Rice has provided to Board Members and the support of the Board in our quest to support every student every day in Nebraska. On behalf of the State Board of Education, it is signed by the President, Patricia Tim.
Thank you very much.
As Donlin goes back, she and I talked a lot about rolling planning when she came into this, and then with my broken leg, I'm doing a lot of rolling planning right now. But I just, I have to say thank you, Donlin, for your service while I've been here in those various capacities and tough act to follow.
Well, thank you. I didn't think something was up, so I quit calling my husband and sent him the link. So, Pat, I hope you're watching. So he'll believe me. No, just thank you again. That was amazing, whoever wrote that, so appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Good luck, Donia.
I'm not done yet. I'll be here for a few more days.
With your permission, we're going to, if you will, deviate a little bit from our planned agenda, and we'd like to have Rachel Wise, if you will, brief us on the Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee.
Thank you, John. The Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee met this morning and had several items on the agenda for discussion. We were discussing some things around ESSA, and we were fortunate to have a We were discussing some things around ESSA, and we were fortunate to have a presentation, a preliminary presentation from Santee, and a outstanding presentation from Druid Hill showing and sharing the progress that has been made for those priority schools. And we are very blessed to be able to continue that discussion today. To tee up the introductions, I'm gonna turn it over to the Commissioner, who will introduce our guests and to continue to have our discussion on the great happenings in our priority school at Druid Hill. Commissioner?
Thank you, Rachel. So first of all, we have a whole team, actually, from Omaha Public Schools, and I see Mark Evans, Superintendent, Lacy America, Board President, Melissa Comine, Sharice Williams. Oh, help me, help me. I knew I'd do this. Mickey. And then Kathy Kennedy is obviously is our consultant. I'd be also remiss not to introduce Dr. Friesen in this effort. It's been quite important. Dr. Epler wasn't able to be here, so if it didn't go well, we could blame Cory, is the way that I saw that. But I don't know exactly what order you're gonna do that, so I'm gonna let you organize yourselves as you see fit. But thank all of you for being here, and I think the board will be quite impressed with their presentation. We ready?
Yeah.
Very good, very good. Well, again, as Commissioner said, Mark Evans, Superintendent OPS. By the way, Donlin, sometimes when you think you're retiring... Just saying. Things happen, but things happen for the best and how things are supposed to be. And in this case, we're gonna talk about a school where things really happened for the best. And I wanna start out by thanking the State Board and by thanking the Commissioner. When this journey first started, Commissioner Bloomstead called me and said, you know, this is where we're at, this is where the State Board is at, and we've looked at a lot of data. And I said, Commissioner, you're not surprising me at all. We already knew it, and we've already started some plans, and we know we're gonna make a difference in the lives of the kids at Druid Hill. We already know that. And I said, I'd love to work with you. My only request is, let's not layer something on top of all the energy and efforts and the purposeful intentional behavior that you're gonna hear about in just a moment from this outstanding team. And the Commissioner said, no, we wanna work with you. We wanna be integrated. We want to work hand in hand. And I just wanna thank him, and I wanna thank the State Board for that, because that's part of our success story, is that we work together. We didn't work in isolation. We didn't work in silos. And the truth is, you don't get this work done unless you work collaboratively. And that's what I think you're gonna see from the journey you're about to hear from. But I wanna recommend to those of you who haven't had a chance yet, come visit, because we can talk a lot about it, and you're gonna see some fantastic data, and all of that's wonderful. But it's not near as wonderful as seeing those smiling faces of young people that are having success and teachers that are having meetings where they're talking about professional development. And some in this room have seen our professional development programs. So I wanna encourage all of you, and we'd be anxious and happy to host you. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our team.
All right. Thank you, and good afternoon. It's nice to be in front of you today. It is truly a pleasure and honor to be presenting the work that Druid Hill has completed this school year as well as last year, because it truly has transformed the lives of the students and also their families and parents and the staff that work there. All of you should have received a hard copy of the progress plan. That is also inclusive of artifacts. If you were to log onto Druid Hill's website, there's a link there that takes you to this artifacts document, and there's some hyperlinks there where you can open up and see more artifacts, as well as some videos that represent the good work that has occurred this school year. And then also, this PowerPoint is also uploaded on the website as well for your reference. The priority plan is designed with three different levers, and they are the three levers that make up an effective school. They are aligned to the AQuest tenants, and they also serve as the foundation for our progress plan. The first lever is clear compelling direction, and that involves the vision, mission, core values, and core beliefs of the building. And they lend themselves to a shared mindset and create a collaborative culture at Druid Hill each and every day. The second lever is student and staff culture, and that is where every parent wants to make sure their child attends school. And that place is Druid Hill. And a quick little story, we have a new student assignment plan that is starting next school year. And all of our elementary schools are designed in partner zones. And so some schools are going back to their neighborhood schools, and every school received a list of those kids. And Druid Hill received a list of fifteen students, and those fifteen parents have elected to keep their children at Druid Hill and have decided they will find transportation to transport them to and back. So that truly is a testament of the student culture at Druid Hill. The staff culture is a place where every teacher and staff member wants to work and come to school every day, and also every student wants to be present. And then the third lever is instructional leadership, and that is ensuring that the curriculum, instruction, and assessment is aligned is aligned to our district and state standards and that a common instructional language permeates throughout the school each and every day. This is Druid Hill's leadership team. I cannot say enough for them. They have worked tirelessly each and every day collectively, making sure that that vision and the actual progress plan takes place. I would also like to mention that our students, our certified and classified staff, our community and parents were also active members in creating this plan and also implementing it. So they are also to be commended. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce Sharice Williams, the proud principal at Druid Hill, who has been the backbone of this work.
Thank you, Mrs. Comine. Thank you again on behalf of the Druid Hill students, staff, parents, and community members. We want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present our progress and all the successes that's been happening in our school this year. Referring back to the clear compelling direction, this was an opportunity for our teachers to have an opportunity to share their voices of what they expected to see in our building along with our students and our parents to have an opportunity to share their voices. And with those shared voices, we were able to come up with procedures and routines that were explicitly written by our teachers to reinforce the expectations in our building. And once those expectations were established, I regularly met with our teachers to make sure that this was followed through to their expectations. And then on a quarterly basis, I met with all of our students by grade level to reinforce those expectations that our teachers expected to see. In addition to that, with those expectations upheld with our teachers along with our parents that were also there to reinforce those expectations with us, we were able to see a decrease in student referral rates. And with those expectations established and the support from our community, we went from seven hundred and seventy referrals to two hundred and fifty-three referrals this school year, which also in turn replaced the higher level of instructional hours that we were losing prior to that. With those goals and core values and the mission and vision established, we were able to save over twenty-nine days of instructional class time for students to be in the classroom instead of out in the office or possibly at home. So as you can see here on this next slide, you will see that those, the evidence of all the hard work that all of our students and our parents and our teachers uphold each and every day. The first line again refers to our office and PAC referrals. That decrease of five hundred and seventeen referrals is amazing for us. Also, you will see further down on the list, our number of days that our students save time in the PAC room and office, average of nine thousand one hundred and sixty minutes that were saved because we had those values carried on through our building that those students were having more conversations with their teachers to get a better understanding of what the expectations are in our school. And again, as mentioned there on the last row, the number of school days that were saved were twenty-one days of saved of school instructional time. And with that, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go back one page, because I just want to reiterate the support that we receive from our students as well as our parents. We had one particular event where I was leaving the office from a visit, a classroom visit, and one of our third-grade students was sitting in the office, and he looked like he had a bad day. And I just addressed him, and, you know, I asked him, you know, what's wrong? And he just looked at me very sternly and said, "Mrs. Williams, I am very disappointed in my actions. Everyone will be disappointed in my actions, and my mom and dad en route will be disappointed in their actions, in my actions." And so that just says a lot to the efforts that my teachers talk to our students, sharing their expectations. Our parents are supporting our expectations, and we also have the support from other community members and agencies, Greek organizations, and other just communities that support our students, such as we had on the last day of school, we had popsicles, and that was a donation from one of our Minnesota Humanities Agencies that support us as well as HIV. So that's just some of our outreach that is a continuous support for our school. Our second student and staff culture goal, again, worked to that increase meant of teacher engagement and having those instructional conversations to improve teaching and learning. And so we began this journey with utilizing teaching studies, which helped us as an instructional team to support our teachers with ensuring that we are aligning our state standards to our lesson plans, that we're making sure that we are following the pacing guide and all of those Nebraska frameworks that were established for us to follow, as well as supporting our students through coaching. And another side note about the coaching aspect, I mean, it was, in the beginning, it was a challenge for myself and our team to get into those rooms. But once we got into those rooms on a daily basis and students were engaged in the work that they saw their teachers and administrative team doing, students were then asking, when their teachers returned from a teaching study, so did we do what we were supposed to do? Did we, did we make sure we were in the rotations right? Did they hear descriptive feedback? Our students were saying the language that our teachers are using amongst their peers. So that was just a strength of what is happening in our buildings on a daily basis. And our last goal of instructional leadership, this was withheld through our professional learning community. We're, this was our first year implementing this process to support our core subject areas. And within this professional learning community, the instructional facilitator, our literacy coach, math coach, elementary supervisor, and Mrs. Comine as well, would come in and meet with us weekly on their visits. They would sometimes be there every day, even Dr. Bloomstead came in on one visit, Mr. Evans came in on another visit. But just, just to have that support during that professional learning that was happening with our leadership teams and with our teachers involved in that process, it really carried a lot to our teachers to say, our district really cares about what we're doing, our stake, our stakeholders really care about the input that we are providing to our families and our community members and the support of our school board. I mean, and to see Dr. Bloomstead in our building, just walking through and having walks with some of our student ambassadors and, and just the engagement that was happening was just very powerful for everyone to see. And, and everyone just feels so much more at home and at ease with instruction happening as well as the positive communication that's happening through our building. And in support of the professional learning community meetings that we do have daily with our grades three through five and kindergarten through second grade is bi-monthly, we support those teachers with instructional lesson planning. We support them through book studies. We also are, as a leadership team, are involved in book studies as well to support our teachers. One of the books we just finished was Teach Like a Champion by Doug Lamoff. So we were able to support our teachers with other instructional strategies that can benefit their students and increase their confidence level in teaching instruction to their students at different levels of learning. As well as also supporting and reading instruction, we do have the support with the help of Mr. Evans and Dr. Bloomstead and Dr. Friesen, allowing my team to have a voice in what our building needs. We needed someone to be able to support us in reading instruction. We needed someone to support us in literacy instruction and math instruction. So having all of those coaches available to us in our building, when teachers have those questions that we may not have direct answers to, but we have those experiences that was allotted to us through our budget and, and just listening to the voices of our school building really helped to drive instruction and to increase that practice of using data in those developments of lesson planning again and allowing for that drive to continue throughout the, throughout the year. And then also, we included in our instructional planning, we wanted to just to make sure that we as a building were inclusive of every party that ought to be recognized in this journey. And so in these photos here, you'll see that we do have our TAC officials involved. We have our leadership team. We have teachers represented here, our leadership team in the top corner. All those people played a part in allowing teachers to have a voice in what they wanted to get information on to drive instruction in our building. We allowed them to have an opportunity to have professional development brought to them and also to reverse those roles. We have teachers that are very strong in instruction, and they also had an opportunity to provide professional development to their peers, which gave our other teachers opportunities to say, well, you know, I've had a little more experience with differentiation. Maybe I could have that teacher come in and visit my room and see if there's other areas of weakness that I may have that I can apply a different strategy to. So all of those integral parts of having peers, peer coaching happening, the coaching visits that, I mean, an overwhelming eight hundred coaching visits, that just shows to the dedication and commitment of the leadership team and the collaboration between our administrative offices and our leadership team and our parents too, saying, what is happening in my classroom? Is my student, is my child getting what they deserve to get in my classroom? And we can have this evidence to show, yes, we are providing this information to your child during this time. This teacher is receiving this professional development at this opportune time. And so anytime that a teacher would have, or a parent may have an idea, our doors are always open. As a matter of fact, we're going to have, our stakeholders meeting will be brought to Omaha Public Schools, and I'm happy to house that. That will be happening in June. We're going to make arrangements to make sure that's done with our summer school parents, because we have had a record registration this year of over a hundred and twenty-two students registered for summer school, and that's just, I'm just so excited. So again, I just want to thank you all for this opportunity to share the success and just the drive and the commitment that Druid Hill students and parents and our community members have on this journey. And I'm just ready to move forward.
Thank you so much for being here for Dave, for sharing your story. I think we also wanted to engage somewhat in a discussion. I'll turn to Commissioner if, if you've got any comments. If not, we'll open it up for questions and discussion.
Yeah, just a couple of comments, and I think, first of all, what we're trying to build, obviously, are models of how we can help school districts across the state. And so I actually say thank you for what we've learned and what I personally learned in being able to work with you. I think it's absolutely critical that when we look at this, our relationship between the Department of Education and our school districts is this close, and I'm very pleased to be able to, to have you here today and present that. I, I should, you know, Mark, when I called Mark, and Mark very much reiterated that story quite well. I, I think the funny part is the first time I walked into the building, into Druid Hill. I think the funny part is the first time I walked into the building, into Druid Hill, and Sharice saw probably Dr. Freisen and I walking in, she thought, "What the heck?" And I suspect that was more the feeling than any joy. But I will tell you, Sharice is remarkable in that this is about building leadership at, at a school level. And I, I mean, I am, I'm amazed because when I think through that first time that I went through that building and it, and it seemed like a lot of things were obviously going on, but the focus, the ability to get back to that focus was critical. I thank Dr. Kennedy for her abilities to bring some of that focus into that, into that effort and helping us continue to build and evolve a model. But I've also had the pleasure to be in conversations with Mark and Melissa in our other work. They've been important in our conversations around our S work and thinking about how we do principal leadership and development in a different way that's contributing to what we're doing and building as a plan for the state. And so it's beyond just this priority school work and just this one place, but this one place is remarkable. And I, I thank you for all of your hard work.
Well, we'll start with the questions. I'll start with one, and I just want you to share, Sharice, a little bit. We were discussing assessment earlier today and the fact that you've been using the measures of academic progress this year, and you were highlighting some things and particularly, and I can't replicate the way you did, the students and student engagement around assessment. If you could share with my colleagues a little bit about what's been happening with assessment in Druid Hill, it would be great.
Sure. What we have implemented this year are student goal setting. And we have taken in a drive in reading and math as one of our strengths for getting more student engagement because that seems to be their focus as far as using differentiated genres to build conversations in reading instruction and as well as running math groups through our Century Twenty-One skills, through our best instructional practices. And one of the students, as we were walking through the building, ran up and just was, he was just very disappointed that he didn't meet his goal, but he was, he said he was adamant about, "I'm going to make sure I'm going to make the goal by the springtime. You wait and see." And so what our teachers are gaining from that is reassuring that they are reviewing their assessments and making sure that they're making those adaptations to their lesson plans so that they're meeting the needs of all of the students. So those PLCs or Professional Learning Group meetings that we are having helps to give our teachers more information or support on how they can meet those needs of all of our students. So that goal setting that all of our students, kindergarten through fifth grade, are engaged in has made a great impact just on the dialogue that happens between student and teacher.
Thank you. Other, Molly?
Thank you again for coming today. The first, the first time that we've had these priority schools complete the first year, it's wonderful that you've done such a good job. I was just curious, do you think that your early childhood education and expanded learning opportunities have changed as a result of the, the, the different changes you've made this year? And if so, why are they important?
Our early childhood team of teachers are actually involved in our instructional leadership team group, and we meet every Wednesday. We began this journey in August, and our early childhood team made sure that we, and I also made sure that we, they were inclusive in our conversations of instruction. So they support our plan by having math centers. We make sure that our reading coach goes into classrooms to support the teachers with setting some of those reading centers and getting those Level A books in those, in those centers for reading instruction in early childhood. But it's very instrumental for all of our teachers to feel inclusive in the process, for all of our students to feel a part of the goal that we're striving for.
Do you have six pens, two, the zero through three?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Do you use six pens?
No.
No? So do you have any early childhood intervention or support at Druid Hill?
We use the Brigance Testing Assessment, and we carry that information that we receive from summer school. We carry that over into the fall. So our teachers begin the school year with that information that, from the students that were tested from the summertime.
Okay. And then what about expanded learning opportunities? After school, are you doing anything else, anything different?
We have after-school programs for our kindergarten through fifth grade, and I believe we're going to be working towards including that, lowering the age because they can begin at age five.
Other, Pat?
Yes, yes.
Just like the more comments, I'd like to say that I really appreciate your positivity in doing this. You're not making excuses, you're facing challenges. I think that's extremely important. Also, you know, what you're doing, hopefully, as the Commissioner mentioned, is going to have an impact on what we as a board do, as well as what OPS does. Obviously, you know, you've got a lot of needs improvement schools in OPS. We have eighty-five needs improvement schools across the state. And hopefully, we can, we can learn from what you're doing. And hopefully, we won't see you here in a couple of years, that you'll move on and that somebody else will take your place. So we wish you much luck. But again, I really appreciate the positivity you're showing toward, toward this challenge that you have, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. John?
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you very much. What a blessing for you all to be here, and I'm very, very proud to represent you all here at the state. So thank you, thank you very much. Quick question I have for you. All the lessons you've learned so far on this, on this road, on this trek, are they applied at any other schools in OPS right now? The template, the lessons learned?
Yeah, I'll start out and then Melissa can fill in, in the gaps. The role that Melissa plays, she's assigned approximately twenty schools.
Twenty-one.
That she supports that school, just like she supports Sharice. And so the lessons we learn here are being applied in all of her twenty schools. Different levels because we differentiate because different schools have different needs. But if we have some of the same needs, then we're applying the same resources, which has been a shift in how we operate as a district where we're really trying to align the resources where they're most needed, instead of just kind of one size fits all. We really try to focus in. And some of the things we're learning at Druid Hill really help us in aligning those resources. And some of those resources, it could be a literacy facilitator, it could be professional development, it could be leadership support, whatever that site needs because every site has its own intricacies to work through and individual needs that are different from school A to school B. Even when the demographics are the same, from school A to school B, they still might have some different needs based on the culture and climate of that school.
I understand that some of the schools, in regards to one of the most important points, if you will, was parental involvement right off the get-go. Was parental involvement, if you will, emphasized with this plan?
I want to give one example, then I'll let you, you build on this. I was in the building just, just touring, I don't know, six, seven months ago, and talking to teachers and, and young people. And I noticed, it was at the end of the school day, and I noticed there were a couple of parents sitting by the door. And I said, "Gosh, it's, you know, it's twenty minutes before school lets out." And so I walked over to Sharice and I said, "Why, how come the parents are showing up, you know, twenty minutes before?" And she said, "Well, you know, that's an interesting story." She said, "Those same parents were showing up before and taking their children out of school so they could avoid the traffic when school let out." And she said, "Now, because of the success we're having, the student achievement gains, the culture and climate and belief that we can make a difference and that we are going to be better readers and better in math, and now they say we don't want them to miss that math lesson. We don't want them to miss, and so now they wait." And that's a culture, climate issue with parents who now believe in the mission of the school. And that was such clear evidence of that to me. And, and I can remember when we had parents that would show up. And we've got twenty minutes still of class instruction, and they pull the young person out, which is tough on the school. You really can't say no, but it's very hard because you know the student's missing out. And if you do that every day, imagine that, a whole week of that, twenty minutes a day. So that's my clear, clear evidence of how that culture, climate, and parent involvement's changed. But you may want to build on that, Melissa or Sharice.
I have many stories. I guess the one that always comes to mind is last year Druid Hill was a silver award-winning school. And so our district has gold, silver, and bronze awards. And to be a silver award, that's the award Druid Hill received, you had to have a five percent increase on three of the, or two of the four NESA assessments. And they won the silver award. And when Sharice went back to school this fall and held her parent coffees that were developed last school year based off of the Five Voices, Parents is one of the voices, the parents really took pride and ownership in that award. They were sitting and talking about what grade, they were, the questions they were asking were so specific. "Tell me more about this assessment. What grades was this?" And then when they realized they had a son or daughter in one of the tested grades, they said, "My child contributed to that." And so parents are just deciding to send their children to Druid Hill regardless of where they live. They're deciding to keep them there and all day long. But they're also taking a vested interest in not just what their individual child is achieving, but the school collectively as well.
Thank you.
Well, we'll take an opportunity for what, what questions do you have of us? Or what advice do you have for us? What are the things that we as a state board and the Department of Education can do to continue to support the work and the progress and the great things that are happening? This is your opportunity to tell us. What do we need to do to help continue to support and?
I would say what I've learned as a personal growth for mine that would benefit the board would be being visible, coming into the schools and just coming to visit the schools. That's a very important piece.
And I'll, I'll jump in before Melissa, just say that there's never a silver bullet. And, and I share that with President America as well on our board. There's never one single answer. It's, it's a multiplicity of answers that are aligned, that are all connected to a vision and mission, and then implemented with fidelity, with high-quality leadership. So there's not, it's not easy. It's hard work. She's describing it and she's happy today, but she has worked hard. There were days when she wasn't as happy. But at the end of it all, when you get results, you feel pretty good. And then that's what builds on it. So it's a journey. It's not a destination. It's not one thing. As you can see from this plan, the amount of aligned resources that are applied to this compelling and purposeful and intentional behavior, it, it takes a lot of time and energy and resources. And it doesn't happen overnight, but it takes everybody working together. And that's why this school's successful. And that's why in OPS, our student achievement's at its highest level ever, our achievement gap's at its lowest level ever, because we understand that, that it's a journey and that we've got aligned resources. And in this case, we moved it forward very quickly. They don't always move forward quite as quickly. So that would be my takeaway for the board is that you've got to get everybody on the same page and that understand it's not one thing. It's, it's parents' community, it's climate, it's culture, it's instructional leadership, it's all of those things, data analysis and understanding of how to apply that, and knowing what you're going to do every single month. At the start of this school year, Sharice and I talked, and of course, she was very excited because they had had success last year, and they'd already planned out the whole year. And she looked at me with a big smile at our principal's retreat in the summer, and she said, "I'm more excited about this year than I ever have been," because she had it all planned out. And that's the thing too, which took a lot of hard work. She knew what was going to happen in August. She knew what was going to happen in September. She knew what was going to happen in October, November. It was all planned out. And that's the kind of planning and effort it takes, and that takes extra resources and time from a lot of people, including Melissa, Dr. Kennedy, and, and others. So I applaud the board for being willing to allow us to do that. The Commissioner, many of you now, Deputy Commissioner Ryan, we've had opportunities to talk. I think the intent that I'm hearing from everybody is that this is a complete package and you want to be a part of supporting that complete package. So I appreciate all of that.
I would like to say thank you to NDE and also the board. The partnership was extremely collaborative from the very start. We, we are very positive because we know that we're going to make sure that the good work gets done, but it wasn't easy work. And like Mr. Evans says, it's not one thing. It's a multitude of things. And you have a lot of people trying to tell you it is one thing, and it's not. It is everything, and it's doing everything very well. So I think it's important to remember that it's an evolution. It's about building capacity, and you keep coming back for more. And NDE allowed that partnership, that collaboration. They allowed that evolution to happen. They were always extremely positive. They were always there if you needed to call them, text them, email them. We used to laugh at the beginning. We were saying, like, "Who would ever have known it was this much fun to be a priority school?" And we did.
Seven thirty in the morning.
At seven thirty in the morning, we had early morning meetings, and Dr. Epler always drove to Omaha to make that seven thirty meeting and with a bunch of ladies in the room. So we, I, I just really appreciate the openness and the collegiality and the partnership because it, it was never stressful. The partnership and the, being a priority school, the label wasn't stressful. And so it allowed us to place all the work on, in the areas it needed to be placed on. We never had to place it anywhere else. It was always about the students.
Thank you. And thank you again so much for being here and for the work that you've done. Mrs. Williams, hats off to your leadership as the building principal and being able to herd everybody and not just the kids in this, in this process. It's, it's really, I think, heartwarming to us sitting here a year later, feeling like we are on such a right pathway because of the work that we're seeing from you and from your team. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you very much. With that, we'll take a ten-minute break.
Commissioner Bloomstead, you wanting to make a few comments regarding?
Yeah, please. First of all, I, I just wanted to do a, a little bit more wrap-up. So, part of the conversation within the committee today was, obviously, we had Santee here and their position. Part of the reason we wanted Druid Hill to be able to present to the full Board is that it's my expectation that I'll have a recommendation to the, to the committee to consider taking Druid Hill off that priority status. That would be the first time that we've done something like that. And it gives us a chance to be able to start to move through what, how we would exit someone out of that. We've had great conversations about how we also, because we don't want to abandon anyone on the good progress that they've had, but what that kind of support system continues to look like, how we continue to work with Omaha Public Schools and building that capacity. Because we, because, well, a couple of things. Because Druid Hill had actually already started down this process, they're actually like they're in year two. It just happened to be that, that we entered kind of six months into that, into that fold at that moment in time. And so, I'm, I'm really quite excited to be able to make that recommendation, you know, keep up the hard work. Don't let, don't let, but the, but the reality is we'll bring back some other information and some of that evidence back to the committee for your full recommend, for the committee's recommendation, then to the full Board would be the intention on, on that particular. I'll tell you the other two priority schools that basically our recommendation will be to continue another year. Remember, they're essentially in year one, and the progress that we've seen there is good, but we, we have more progress to be made there. And we think that, that continued effort, that continued focus, that kind of the continued work that Dr. Kennedy brings to the, to the table is really quite important too. So, that's how I see that coming together and being able to tie those things together. And so, we didn't forget, and I didn't want to leave that unsaid with the Druid Hill team here, but important work yet to kind of finalize and move us forward on that, on that process. So, so, thank you once again, and thank you for spending time with us this afternoon.
Thank you, Commissioner. Standing Committee reports. Maureen, please report on the AQuest Teaching and Learning Domain Committee meeting.
Yes, we don't have any action items to act upon tomorrow at our regular Board meeting, but the Teaching and Learning Committee will, will bring a recommendation to the Board in August for ACT standard setting and NESA language arts standard setting for Board approval. That was the basis of what we talked about.
Thank you, Maureen. Appreciate it. Molly, please report on the AQuest Student Success and Access Domain Committee meeting, please.
Okay, if you'd refer to your agenda, four-point, two-point A, and Frieda Lang is here. If I'd ask Frieda, please come to the front. She's going to be talking about approving accreditation of schools for 2018 school year in accordance with the provision of Rule 10, Regulations and Procedures for the accreditation of schools.
Thank you, Molly. Frieda Lang from Accreditation and School Improvement, and this item is related to all of our accredited schools, systems, districts. And we are recommending that at this point in time, it says 245 districts will be brought forward to, for, to be accredited to operate in the 2017-18 school year. That will be next year, 244, because Lynch and West Boyd will be consolidating. But at this point in time, they are operating separately, so they are both on the list. And what we do is at the beginning of a school year, every district, public and every non-public school that is accredited sends in assurance statements. This is a self-report based on Rule 10, noting where they, whether or not they are in compliance because there may be some areas that they are in violation of, and it's those schools that year we work with them to help them correct any violation or, because it may be something that happened recently. Or, for instance, somebody leaves the system at the beginning of a school year and they are short of a person or something. So, if they have a plan in place, we will work with them for a year. If it is not corrected, it would be brought forward the next year that they would be placed on probation. But we have no districts in that situation at this point in time. So, those are the first 245 that are mentioned. Then we also have our 82 non-publics. All of our non-public schools need to be approved by statute. That, it follows Rule 14. Those were brought forward to, those approved schools were brought forward to you in April. These 82 schools that you see on the list have elected to be accredited. And they, again, are meeting the requirements of Rule 10. Now, this has grown in the last five years. We had 57 non-publics that were accredited five years ago, and you can see we have 82 at this point in time. So, many of our non-publics are moving towards the accredited status. That leaves five of our special-purpose schools, and that's exactly what it means. They have a special purpose in the state of Nebraska that the State Board recognizes. So, they, they follow Rule 10 so that the students that are involved in, and I saw on the list, Geneva, Carney West, the University of Nebraska High School, Pine Ridge, Job Corps, and then our high school within our prison system are special purpose. And there are elements within Rule 10 that they may not be able to meet because of special circumstances, so they are accredited under special purpose. So, those will be the, the systems that we are bringing forward to you tomorrow so that they can operate in the 2017-18 school year.
Pat?
I think I asked you this question, but for, you know, just for public consumption of these schools, how often, you, you, you obviously get your report every, every fall or every year. How often do you go out and actually observe that these schools are in compliance as far as accreditation goes?
Okay, every five years, every accredited school system, public or non-public, will have a visit that lasts anywhere from a full day to two full days. That's the continuous improvement process, external review. And in addition to that, we do desk audits, and we will visit approximately 20, if we could make it, accredited schools. But we are also visiting approved schools and some of our interim program schools. But we do random checks throughout the state. Some of that is based on maybe a concern that we are hearing, so we will. Some of that is based on maybe a concern that we are hearing, so we will go, and others is just pure and simply that we try to get into the different districts on, at least every seven years, in addition to that five-year visit.
All right, I did want to remark that the committee did recommend this move forward unanimously. And Rachel, question?
Yeah, I just had a quick question, and that's, you know, maybe I missed something here, but did you say the list of Rule 14 schools was attached?
No.
Not attached?
We brought those forward in April.
It's just the additional on this one.
These are the, all of the accredited systems.
Thank you.
All right, and now we're right now to 4.2, point B, point one, action item. And this is approved accreditation for Nelson Mandela School, currently classified as an approved school, to operate as accredited in 2018 school year in accordance with the provisions of Rule 10, Regulations and Procedures for Accreditation of Schools. Frida?
Okay, I know that I have brought forward Nelson Mandela before, and that was in the 2014 school year to bring it into an approved status. They opened, or they were wanting to open in the 14-15 school year. And we, if any school, if we get an application from any school that wants to open, we will conduct several visits throughout that year prior to August, making sure they have everything in place that brings them into compliance with Rule 14 or the approved, the rule for approval. Nelson Mandela School did that. They started with kindergarten and first grade, and they are adding a grade every year from that point in time. They have operated successfully now for two years. They will be adding third grade next year, and they have made application to become accredited. So, which in turn would raise that 82 up to 83 ultimately.
All right, any questions?
I have a question. So with Nelson Mandela, as they're, and do they have, what, through third grade right now? What grades do they have?
Through second grade.
Through second grade right now?
Adding third grade next year.
Next year. So as we accredit K8, how do we, do we do some monitoring as they add additional grades? And what process do we use? Because obviously, they wouldn't have everything in place for those additional grades right at this point in time. So what process do you use to kind of monitor that expansion as they add grades over time?
All right, once a school or an organization makes an application, we will visit, as I said, making sure they are in compliance with everything that is necessary for that grade, grade levels. And now, in this case, we know that they are adding the third grade. We have visited them on a, on an annual basis, noting that they have the certificated teachers in place, appropriate endorsements, that the facilities are approved and so on. Now, we note with third grade, they have added two more rooms, and we have visited them. We also know they have space, et cetera, for, to, to continue to move forward. And so we will be, we will be visiting them on a regular basis.
So in essence, every year you'll visit if they add a grade as a part of that process to monitor that expansion?
Right, but we will not bring them forward to be newly accredited. They will stand next year if you so move. They will stand accredited. We will just continue to monitor via visits and, and self-reports that they are in compliance.
All right, and the committee did move to move this forward unanimously. The next action item we have is, I think we're done with you. Melody, Melody Hobson, it's your turn to come up. This is approval of early childhood education grant applications. And Melody did another wonderful job talking about early childhood education grant funding. And she's going to discuss right now this action item.
Because of the role of the state aid, we did have some, some money, which we generally do every year, to, to approve some additional grants. We had a grant application that went out in November, and we had outside reviewers review them. And so the list that you have attached is, is the list of 11 proposed grantees that we're recommending for approval. They can either be new grants for districts or expansion grants for, for school districts that already have an early childhood program. The, for a half-day program, the amount that they could write for would be $50,000 per classroom. For a full-day program, it would be $130,000 per classroom. Not all of the districts wrote for the full amount, so that's why you have some kind of funky-looking numbers that are even. There, there is some startup money available for new classrooms. Again, not always do they get a full $25,000 for a classroom, depending on whether they need it. But the, the decisions were made based on the strength of the application and then where they were throughout the, the state. We do try to recommend grants be approved in urban and rural areas, all way, all across the state, in large and small districts. And you have the breakdown of congressional district and size of town in the rationale.
There was one question brought up in the committee meeting, and it was if NDE is, is focusing on those needs improvement schools and if the transition is being attended to. Do you, do you ever invite people that have like an elementary needs improvement school identified? Do you ever encourage them to apply for early childhood grants, which would create better transitions into that school?
That is not one of the areas that we specifically looked for this year. I will say that we have more than, more than 200 school districts that already have an early childhood program. So like our, our priority schools this year already have an early childhood classroom. So we have not, we may, we can look at that next year, but that was not our, that was not one of the criteria that we used.
I just thought that was interesting. That was, that question was brought up. If we were, you know, really trying to give those kids equity, and, and we know that the school might have some concerns. So maybe, maybe during the next year, that could be a consideration. Are there any questions?
I just thought I'd make a comment, you know, I, I made a comment. I think I brought up that issue earlier, but I think it would be informative of us, as we're looking at grants to school systems across the state, that, you know, maybe we indicate whether those particular grants or whatever we're doing with those systems are actually needs improvement schools. I think that would be helpful, just in, you know, seeing if we're, you know, give us an idea as to whether we're doing our job, so, just a thought process.
I might just highlight, because actually Melody and I just yesterday had a bit of a conversation around how the various early childhood programs and pre-K programs intersect with that, and the conversation in particular around the priority schools. But I, I think one of our, really, one of our goals underlying AQuest is to ensure that every school has the capacity necessary to continue to improve and to do that work. And I think it's a good point that, and again, my guest and I talk a little bit about the SO work tomorrow, about how we target resources to schools that seem to need those particular resources. So I think it's a great point, and I wouldn't even know which schools right now. I'd have to look at the combined list to know how many of our needs improvement schools happen to have access to early childhood. I would say also, that's one of your strategic planning goals, that we, we came up with a, some way to try to measure who has access to those and put that into the, into the goal language itself. And so that's, that's some work that we have ongoing, too. So I think that ties it together pretty neatly, but I, I think it's a great point. Where are we putting resources? How are we doing that? Are we sending it to places with significant needs, so?
And Pat's not here today, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't say, she always talks about it. It's not just early childhood programs, but it's high-quality, developmentally appropriate. And especially for those students that may come from a toxic environment, it's, it's the great equity moment, probably of their lives, and a great investment for Nebraska. Are there any questions, concerns? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Molly. Thank you very much. I'll report on the Policy Committee meeting. Scott?
Good afternoon. Scott Summers, General Counsel. As John indicated, we're going to have before you tomorrow an amendment, a proposed amendment to Board Policy B17 that deals mainly with the appointment of hearing officers. We've talked a lot about this in committee and outside. So what it does is, it allows the Commissioner, when we get an option enrollment petition, when a parent or guardian has, wants to appeal the denial of an option enrollment application, it allows the Commissioner to appoint the hearing officer directly, so we can speed things up. I call that the Glenn Flint Memorial. Glenn, Glenn raised the topic, and so this all sounds pretty mundane, and the appointment of a hearing officer really was not of terribly controversial for the board. We have a contract with a few hearing officers, so, but here's what we're doing, I think, to put it in terms of the good. If you are a parent or child, you apply to option enroll. Your deadline is March 15th. Well, so, human nature, things are done in around March 15th often. So the school has a certain number of days to act on it, which can be up to like, you know, 30. And so they're acting on it, we'll say around about April. So you're, by the time the board would get it to appoint a hearing officer, we're talking, this meeting sometimes, June, to simply appoint a hearing officer in the usual option enrollment case. And then you've got to have the hearing, have a decision, get it to the board. So even though the parent or guardian would have timely appealed the decision, by the time the board is able to act with no July meeting and getting the decision of the hearing officer, the school year for which they were applying to option is already upon us. And it's not because of dereliction of duty, that's just the way the thing rolled. So why, why wait to appoint the hearing officer? Why wait to have the board? The Commissioner can do it directly. We can cut a few weeks out of this and maybe get it done before the school year. So that's the effect on the ground, so to speak. Usually when you're in two forms, it doesn't time up right today, or this matter, it really did. We made a corresponding change in Rule 19, the residency and enrollment rule that was before you. That was part of the holdup on this, is because that provided that all appeals were under 61, Rule 61. But now we've basically said, accept option enrollment, and Rule 61 said the board appoints a hearing officer. So we massage that language to say, but for option appeals, the Commissioner can. So that's all this is doing, is allowing that to speed up. And we did get it timed out right with 19, which was signed today and operative next week. So are there any questions? I believe John wasn't correct. We moved it unanimously this morning.
That's correct. We did.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, but that's what we're doing.
Thank you, Scott. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, and I appreciate the Policy Committee moving in this direction. I think this is really good direction to expedite the, the process. And I also appreciate the opportunity for us to really start to continue this discussion around option enrollment, because, you know, we should pride ourselves, Nebraska, that we do have the choice option with option enrollment. And how do we enhance and continue to grow choice through the framework of option enrollment that's been in the state for quite a few years? And this is one step in that process, because it gives parents, yeah, a vehicle if they have a question about a decision that's made in the, in the, in the district and stuff. So thank you.
Sure. I, I will add, too.
Thank you.
The way the board policy is constructed, B17 is proposed to be amended. You've also indicated, without an out-and-out command, but a framework for the assigned hearing officers that said the board desires the decision within 60 days, 40, I forget the days we said. So we're, we're also saying it signals to our hearing officer that the board's position on it is, get to it as soon as we can.
Thanks, Scott. Oh, I'm sorry.
I agree with what Rachel said, but you gave a really good example this morning of why a parent might wait as late as March 15th to, just for our audience, you know, viewing at home. Do you remember the example of why a parent might at the last minute fill out the option enrollment?
Oh.
Yeah, just so that they understand situations.
Actually, I'm not, I thought I, now, now I'm drawing a blank.
It was like if a parent gets a new job and they have to switch districts.
Oh, yeah.
You gave some examples that way, just so our audience knows the, the, you know, reasons and rationale behind further examples of why you're doing that.
Why you would, why you would choose to option out of your district, district?
I just thought the example you gave was really good, so, I already gave it, so.
Okay.
I think it was change the job, and I think we, other family circumstances.
Right.
Could have that. I mean divorces and other things that happen that sometimes the last minute.
Okay, yeah.
It was a really good example, though, Scott.
I was about to speak to the example of why parents miss the March 15th deadline, which we've discussed, but then I thought that wasn't quite what you were asking, so, okay.
Thank, thank you, Lisa.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Scott. Rachel, please report on the Legislative Committee.
The Legislative Committee, the Legislative Committee met today and had several discussion items. The discussion items were, we'll be coming back in August in more depth, discussion about, you know, what are some of the proactive kinds of steps that we need to continue to take and have a better understanding of what our statutory needs are, and how do we continue to use our regulatory authority to improve educational outcomes for young people? But our primary emphasis, Brian, if you'll come forward, was debriefing, I would say, on 2017 legislative session. And Brian, in your documents, you have the overview of the action that was taken in the 2017 and the interim studies that are proposed. So Brian, if you want to talk a little bit about those, that would be great. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Brian Halsted, Chief of Staff. As I think everybody in the room knows, the Nebraska Legislature, the 105th Legislature First Session, they adjourned Sine Di on May 23rd, which was only the 86th day of a constitutionally permitted 90-day session. So they got done early in that regard. The, the document that's attached shows the bills that impacted education, those that got enacted. And there were not a large number of bills enacted this last session, and actually, very few education-related bills. The bills that did get enacted dealt with school finance, TOSA, which was a budget issue as we all knew going into the session. That bill was amended to generate basically about $998,700,000 of state aid, which this, this past week, our school finance team certified state aid and budget authority to all the school districts out there, so they all knew the numbers. The other bill that did get enacted was Senator Vargas's bill, LB 427, that deals with pregnant students and parenting students, setting forth a requirement that school districts have policies by next May that address that whole issue. The bill provides that the department may do a model policy to assist school districts. It also provides that the department may provide training in that regard. I believe the Policy Committee had a brief discussion on that whole topic, so we'll wait to see what the Policy Committee brings forward on, on that topic. And the other major bill that got done was LB 512, which you supported, which started out as the usual cleanup bill for education. It became the bill to carry a whole bunch of other bills that got enacted this session. You can see the analysis there. As I told staff, if you were hoping for legislative changes, look to 512 to see if any of your items got included in there, because that's the bill that largely carried all the education issues this session. Right now, interim studies are what is going to be the legislature's work between now and next January when they reconvene. The list of studies are there. Lamont Rainey, who's one of the legal counsels for the Education Committee, is in the room today. Good to see Lamont come to our meetings. He's already reached out to us at the department looking for information to start work on that. So we know Lamont is already busy as to when senators will start working on that is yet to be seen. So largely a session where there was a lot of talk, but not a lot of new So largely a session where there was a lot of talk, but not a lot of new major legislation. The budget controlled almost all of that limitation, so I'll stop there, see if you have any questions on any of that information.
Any questions? Go ahead.
I guess I would, just speaking for myself, I would hope that the policy committee would address the Senator Vargas's bill. I think that's an opportunity for the State Board to help some of those smaller two hundred and forty-five school districts across the state by giving them a template that they can work with. And I don't think that's asking too much, but I think it's something that we need to do in order to let those, those school districts know that we're, we're working on this and that we're going to try and help them out to the best we can. Thank you.
Any other questions of Brian's? Brian's saying no. Brian's saying no.
What I can tell you is today it's two hundred and forty-four school districts because the Lynch-West Boyd took effect today, so there's only two hundred and forty-four going forward.
All right, thank you for the update. And that's our report, thank you.
Thank you Rachel. I'll report on the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. If I could have Bryce Wilson provide us a review of your single audit, state single audit report, especially the ADM, the average daily membership verification issue.
Sure, I'm Bryce Wilson, Director of Finance and Organizational Services. The action item that John's talking about, that'll be before you tomorrow, is to accept the two thousand sixteen state single audit report that was issued earlier this year. We just got, basically this last month, we just got those findings, or just got the official report. We only had one finding, it's the same finding that's shown up in the last two audits, it's just that the school district audits, the state auditor's office felt that there wasn't enough information on there, enough testing on average daily membership. This came about last July, we found out about this finding, we quickly implemented some procedures to get it taken care of in the August, September timeframe that those audits roll in, so that we had it addressed right away the first cycle. We took all care of all that and then we didn't have time at that moment to update the rule. Rule one, as Scott mentioned just a second ago, was updated yesterday to include all those additional procedures there to address this issue. It should be nothing, we, we've worked with the auditor's office to make sure that we've handled all of their concerns and should be good going forward.
And including Rule one?
It's included in Rule one, yep. So, and there was, again, one, one finding was all, the state report was long and we had one finding out of all of it, so we were pretty pleased with that.
Any questions? And also the board members in this committee voted to accept this, this motion. Thank you. I'll continue on and I'll report on the Commissioner's Appraisal Committee meeting. For the action item tomorrow, we'd like for the board to approve the revision of the Commissioner's contract to reflect the annual increase given to all state employees, which was one percent. That was, if you will, recalculated, placed in his employment contract, and we'd like for the board to approve it tomorrow. Any questions?
Comment? I just, I fully support this, you know, I think originally when we passed the, or reviewed the, or renewed the Commissioner's contract, I think in January, we were looking at a two point seven five percent raise for him and he graciously declined to take that raise at that time. And I think it's only appropriate that we, we at least give him the same amount that was negotiated in the state contracts. So I think it's a good move and certainly support it, thank you.
Any other comments? We're up for adjournment.
Really? Very efficient meeting there.
It's not finished yet Molly, I gotta read, gotta read this. The regularly scheduled meeting of the State Board of Education will convene tomorrow morning at nine AM in this room. Thank you very much, we are adjourned. Thank you.